We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order to the Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Ruth Borden, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill. You're hereby notified that a call meeting of the City Commission is called to be held at the regular meeting place of the City Commission at City Hall 201 North Second Street in the city of Palatka to begin at 4:30 on Monday, December 10th, 2018. The purpose of the meeting is to hold discussion on and consider the following: Direction on request to rename Forrester Field to Owens Field at Forrester Park; A request to provide fire marshal services to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. Please go ahead and settle accordingly. We're going to, we'll go ahead and have an indication at this time. Chief Grimes?
In our pledge, well, God, thank you for getting us here today. Thank you for letting us all travel here safely. Be with the Commissioners as they make decisions and impact all of us, Lord. Just lead them in the direction of what they should be, in your name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local police.
Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Mary Lawson Brown. Commissioner Ruth Borden.
President.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
President.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill. Here.
We have a form for the record. Moving on to our agenda items, the first one up is direction on request to rename Forrester Field to Owens Field at Forrester Park. Cooker, if you can forward this up.
And, Commissioner, you do have a memorandum on this, a summary. It's just the last page in the agenda package. I apologize for that. I got a little mixed around.
Yes, sir. My request is, in essence, not to rename the facility itself, is to add the name Owens in, in honor of sweet and sweet Cheryl Owens who served the city of Palatka and Putnam County for over thirty years, impacting thousands and thousands of children during that time. What I would like to end, to give you a little history that I know that we researched, Forrester was the gentleman, the architect, who designed the ravine gardens and, and at one time there was two baseball fields where Forrester Field sits now. Some time over the years, one field was done away with and they made it one bigger field. So, I would, I would just like to add and not take away the name Forrester because I think it's important that, since it was named after him, that we leave it there, but also I think it's, I think it's the right thing and it's an important thing to do to honor Cheryl and sweet Owens who ran the recreation department for you for at least twenty years and until it was shut down in, what, ninety-six?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, and then they went to work for the county, but anyway, and still served all the city kids and all the county kids during that time.
And so, additionally, I mean, from the history, and I think, you know, one of the things that's interesting, I think one of the things that's most important, we, you recall a few months ago, we gave sweet Owens the Palatka Pride Hometown Hero Award. I, I think, you know, the things that were going on there along kind of speak up for who sweet is, but I think just so that we know what goes on with that field in itself, there's a plat, there's a plat that goes along with Forrester Field. So Forrester Field, in essence, has never bared the right name for the actual complex. So it's like, it's the Forrester Recreational Complex or something to that effect. What's proposed is to actually give the baseball field the honorary name of Owens Field and then actually have the new signage, give the history of what the, of what Forrester really is, including the plat. And I think it's important overall because it, one, identifies what Forrester did as far as the ravine gardens is concerned, putting all those, all that stuff together and then, but it also allows us to be able to commemorate the work that's done by both Owens, not just one. And I think it's, you know, and I think for us it becomes critical because when you talk baseball in Palatka, you can't have the conversation without talking about sweet Owens and his contributions from training umpires, certifying high school kids to be umpires to have careers in that field and to, you know, to creating some of the greatest baseball programs that we've had around in a number of years. And so it's befitting. And again, I think the critical piece is not to eliminate anything from Forrester, but to add to it the presence of Owens.
Well, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I, I mean, he put the work in, his wife pretty much did a lot of work without getting paid for it, whatever, from what I understand. My only problem is the, the timing of whatever, how does it fit in if we, does it, a resolution, how does that work from a standpoint if we vote and say yes, and how does that do with timeframes as related? If we pass something tonight or say we're going to pass it, and then we do a resolution and then it comes to a vote and the vote doesn't pass, how does that work? I don't know. But does this, this vote?
You're given direction tonight. You, it's one of two things you can do. You can vote tonight, you can, you can actually take it, and you can take the emergency out of the vote tonight. You can give direction on what to do as far as the resolution and move forward in that direction. And so I guess, I want to hear from the Commissioners, is there any concerns or anything to that effect?
Well, that's the only concern I, and this, we rename it, we're renaming, we're not renaming it, but we're amending or adding, adding the name.
So the plat itself has a name. So the plat, the plat's name has the, is the Forrester Complex, it includes the ravines and all the other stuff.
Right.
And it's not being properly identified as it sits. You know, Forrester Field is the common name that everybody knows, but the plat has never really had its proper name.
Quickly, well, why don't we cure it by giving it its proper name but not taking away Forrester, but also giving it the proper name in addition to?
Right, and that's what it, yeah, so it would be like Owens Field at Forrester Recreation Complex.
Right, so, yeah.
And, and we'll bring that to the City Commission.
Like what they did with, like what they did with Veteran Stadium for the Cooper and...
So it won't cause us to, to change anything that's for, anything, okay, I'm saying it's for its paperwork or anything like that with adding the name, just?
Silence.
Silence, okay.
Well, could, could it be, because when you, when you look up Forre, you're going to look up, if just say somebody pull up Forrester Field, I think if you, if we put down also Owen, because if somebody searched for Owens or something like that, then they wouldn't find it unless it's tagged, but can, can, can it be platted with both names or whatever, or?
It'd take more, amend the plat's going to take more work and I think, and part of the idea was not to go into, not to do all the extra work. It's kind of like, it's kind of like when we changed the name of Eleventh Street to Aethelred Randolph, where you basically changed signage as opposed to changing the nine-one-one address.
Okay.
It's that same perception.
I mean, that's, I mean, I'd just like for it to be a consistent operation, yeah. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I mean.
I think we need to take this matter as an emergency item so that we can move forward with it.
Second.
It's on the agenda, so you can take the answer.
But it's, it's a set of directions, it's just a set of directions.
As I said, we'll move forward, I mean, I, I vote to move forward with the process if there's no issues with, okay, you got a comment?
I just wanted to say that once we adopt the resolution, we'll send that to EMS as well, so they will at least have it in their, in their system in case someone calls and says, "Got an incident at Owens Field." They'll know what we're talking about.
And that's the cleanup piece.
So my, my understanding is that it'll say Owens Field at Forrester Recreation Complex?
Right.
Okay.
Or whatever that?
Or whatever the last word is, I don't, I know.
Just to keep this stuff in order, we got a motion on the floor in a second for to take this as an emergency item.
I see no problem taking it as an emergency item. I see no problem with that.
Motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion, seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Now discussing the name change, it's unanimous.
Make a second?
Not difference.
Okay.
And so we've got, so we've got the item on the floor for direction on what, on the resolution.
You could, you could actually, you could actually make the resolution right now and basically can go back and confirm something that you'll, so you'll have a document, but you could go ahead and not actually and adopt a resolution renaming or designating the field at Forrester Recreation Area as Owens Field, and then you can confirm it with a written resolution, so you guys can sign it at your next meeting or something.
And you got a sample resolution? You guys can have one draft it.
Fine, I can help you, I can help you draft it, we have time.
A placeholder on the agenda for Thursday night for the resolution.
So we can do it, man?
So we can go ahead, actually what we can do is we can take, we can do just what Council says. We can adopt the resolution to change the name of Forrester to Owens Field at the proper name Forrester Recreation Complex or whatever.
Yeah.
The platted name is, and we can do that now by way of motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to change the name to Owens Field at Forrester Recreation Park or whatever the platted name is at that time. Here's a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Any further discussion on the item?
Of course.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, I'm headed to the baseball camp.
And so Coach is leaving, we are, just for informational purposes, our inaugural RBI baseball camp is going on today.
And tomorrow.
Coach, if you can get Mr. Griffin the shirt for him and Ms. Tucker.
Okay.
I'm sure he won't wear it, but...
He's a big guy, he's not, not as medium, not as medium.
The camp is tonight, tomorrow night, and Wednesday we'll have games at Shawbuck, Fred Green, and Forrester.
What an hour.
From six to eight.
Six to eight, each night.
What time is camp at night?
The camp is six to eight.
Six to eight.
It's all at St. John's at there.
It's seven to four. For informational purposes, we have a hundred and forty-four.
Hundred and forty-seven, right.
Four hundred and forty-seven kids that signed up, eighty-two signed up the first two hours.
Of which at least one of them is a future calling family.
Ha ha.
Must be a grandson.
So from seven to fourteen, boys and girls, we've got about sixty girls at the camp as well.
Oh, that's amazing.
Everybody from the Commission has shirts as well.
This is exciting, I mean, this is. You got me, it's like I'm, I'm gaining weight.
I gotta go, thank you.
Yeah, I will also.
So thank you. Next up on our agenda, Chief Grimes, request for fire marshal services to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners.
And that's going to be start with number two.
Number two.
Second page.
Second page.
Okay.
And just for everybody in the public, the summary says that the, it says, "A request for execution of emergency agreement with Putnam County Board of County Commissioners provide fire marshal, fire inspection services to Putnam County Florida, Putnam County's lost its fire marshal and its immediate need for fire marshal services. They've requested that the city provide fire marshal services for inspection in the interim. The temporary arrangement may work into something on a longer term, a temporary agreement will allow time to work on those details." Fire Chief J.R. Grimes, who is also the city's fire marshal, says he's willing to enable to provide those services in the interim. The proposed agreement provided to us by the county attorney's office follows the summary that will serve to solidify our temporary agreement to provide these services while the interlocal agreement can't be negotiated and drafted for presentation to both the Board of County Commissioners and the City Commission. Such as to the proposed agreement proposes that the parties to this agreement shall not be required to pay compensation to any of the other parties for services rendered under this agreement. It's staff recommendation that the county should be required to pay compensation to the city for fire, for fire marshal, fire inspection services even on temporary basis, just as the city pay for compensation to the county for building official services, especially since the city would be required to provide thirty days' notice of the intent to terminate this agreement. The building official services agreement, which was entered into in 2017 stating the compensation or payment shall be as follows. The city shall pay Putnam County three thousand four hundred sixty-six and zero cents dollars per month for services rendered under this agreement. Services exceeding the maximum of twenty-five dollars per hour, twenty-five, twenty-five personal hours per week will accrue an additional charge of forty dollars per hour. Fire chief and fire marshals paid at a rate of forty-one eighty-nine per hour in the same fashion. It is staff recommendation that the city should propose that the county should pay the city the amount of forty dollars per hour billed for actuariality portion of the, of the hour of inspections provided. This amount is not taken into consideration the city's cost to provide health, dental, life, EAP benefits to our employee, nor does it consider the cost of pension benefits, which is thirty-nine point ten percent. Chief Grimes will always be employed, the employee rendering fire services, although Chief Grimes may not be the employee rendering miscellaneous fire inspection services, the cost to the city will be approximately the same, and he supervises and signs off on the inspections. So you have a copy of the agreement that's subsequent to this. Chief, I've kind of taken a little bit of the thunder, and so you want to go ahead and give us some of this information?
Yeah, what this does is this allows them to keep moving forward. They got some projects that are pushing out there. I mean, they've got the George Pacific plant being built. They also have a couple of small commercial projects in the East Palatka area. Just went today and looked at a fire station they're building in East Palatka, but it also keeps them moving forward. Their fire marshal left, gave them two weeks' notice, which kind of just put them in a bind. I told Mr. Suggs and Chief Ramay that we'd be happy to help them until they can figure out what they want to do as far as something in the long term or whatever. This gets us, gets us where we can keep, keep everybody moving. So far, I mean, last week I think I put about three and a half hours in for county time. I kept a spreadsheet just as, so we could keep accurate accounts of how much time we actually spend. So, and I'll continue to do that throughout the process to make sure that we're above the water on that.
And I did authorize Chief Grimes to go ahead and get the county out of their emergency bind that they had last week. So you guys all already provided some services, but it was important that we go ahead and take a look at this emergency agreement to set the compensation. We don't, the mayor not looked at it all, so we don't really have a problem with the rest of it, the compensation part. I believe that the city ought to be compensated similarly, and we can come back with an interlocal agreement once we've had time to negotiate one on both sides. This is just something that's been done in, on an emergency basis. So I do have a placeholder on Thursday nights, Commission Agenda, for something, or you can go ahead and approve it as it is tonight, as we've suggested it, and then I'll have the city attorney go ahead and just write that paragraph.
Before either Commissioner Campbell and then, no, no, no.
I'll make a statement. Maybe.
You got a question, Commissioner Borden?
Well, I guess with the, the way the arrangement of it, it's not going to be compensated.
It will be compensated, but we will build them on it. The Chief Grimes is going to keep track of how many hours, because he can't say that he's going to provide ten hours a week. Some weeks it may be zero, some weeks, you know, I mean, just on one inspection last week, he spent three and a half hours.
Right.
So it, we can't really say that it's going to be every week or more in one week and none in another, so we propose to build it on an hourly basis for the, for right now.
So, so I have, so both men, Mr. Driggers, immediately, we, we received this as we were doing the legislative part of the meeting.
Right.
The biggest concern we have is that, one, you know, it, we're definitely in a position where we're moving forward and it's, and I think it's important for us to continue to build relationships and, you know, it's kind of like with the building services, I think, and she kind of outlines it in her summaries.
Right.
As to where we are. It's important for us to build those relationships, but I never want to do a favor against me a timeline for an hour.
Exactly, right.
And, so, but the, the other part is, when I, when I looked at it initially, from a legal standpoint, and Mr. Holmes is getting an opportunity to check it out, you've got three different things that make up a contract, offer, offer acceptance and consideration. In this case, there is no consideration. It's a legal term which basically says that they have to put something on the table, and in essence, they aren't. And so, I don't think that the way this, they aren't, they aren't, and I don't think that the way this document is written, that it provides any legal consideration for us, and that's just my opinion separately, that's one that doesn't come with any type of retain or alone thought that goes along with it, but I, I, yeah, but I, I do think that it, I think there is a question as to whether it would even be legally binding if it's entered into just based upon the way it's written right now. But the other part is, I, again, I just, I want us to be in a position where we help the county. It may be an opportunity long term for us to sit down and, and look at a way in which those services can be extended for the long haul, you know, just as we're exploring building services.
Sure.
You know, one thing you got to be, you got to understand with our building services going over completely to the county is, they take off fees now except for the fees for fire inspection. And so if we're going to be doing fire inspections for them, then we should be taking all the fees that are associated with fire inspections and, as opposed, in, in the same manner. And so it, it mirrors, it mirrors itself, but when you make the, the decision without having all the pieces to the puzzle in place, it changes. And so I, I think the absolute right thing to do was what Mr. Driggers did initially, which was to help the county out while they're in a bind, which is what Chief wanted to do, which is what we all wanted to do, because we all, you know, we're all better together. But I also think that, you know, there has to be a fair agreement put in place that says, you know, "When we were in a bind, our, our favor came in forty bucks an hour."
Right.
And I just think that, I, I think that it can be done. I don't think a situation where someone's trying to take advantage of a situation or something like that. I just think that when you're making emergency decisions, you sometimes have to huddle up and come up with the right answer so that it all comes together. And I think the best thing that we can do from, from a commission standpoint is to give direction to, to have agreement or draft it or draft our own agreement and present it to the county.
Yes. Well, I do have, and I understand everything that you're saying, and I know that if I'm correct, the forty-two dollars is your, well, the chief's fee.
That's correct.
What about the inspection fee? Is that a part of the forty-two dollars per hour?
We, we...
It's just a flat forty dollars.
Yeah, see, we don't, we're not even charging it. Like, if we were to do an inspection inside the city, we don't have like a fee that we're even charging inside the city to do an inspection, except for the business tax receipt.
Right.
So, I mean, if there's, there is, like, on new construction, there is permitting fees as the mayor alluded to. The only other thing that we usually do and provide inside the city is like small licensed daycares and nursing home facilities and stuff like that that do require an annual inspection for us, for them to renew their license. So we are doing that, so I mean, that's one of the things that we probably going to have to do out there as well, and if there's a fee that you guys want associated with that, then we can surely discuss it.
Would you be doing like, would you be doing special events in, in the same way?
I would think so. I don't, I don't think, I've never, I've never heard of it, I'm not saying they don't, I mean, it's just now we knew we'd had to explore.
It's just later to do it.
Well, they're providing services to the municipalities as well.
That is correct.
And so, that's why, and so that's, and it's those questions, I think, which create the need to have the initial conversation, because again, you in essence would start providing a countywide service.
Correct.
To everyone, no different than what they're doing with us. And I think that, you know, that's one of the things we have to look at, you know, and so I just want us all to be, to understand that and to understand their fees that go on with it. They won't have, I don't think necessarily, the frequency of events that we have in the city.
That is correct.
So the, I think the revenue increase won't be quite the same, but it could create a demand of, of time on chief as it relates, you know, I think anticipated initially it's like twelve hours, but there could be some time where the crunch is more, and we just have to make sure that, one, we can provide the service, and I think, two...
We have, just to keep, I mean, we do have eleven more inspectors on shifts throughout the, you know, the three other shifts, there is eleven more inside the city. So, I mean, one of those would be able to go out and do another inspection if needed, so it's not, I mean, not, all the work burns not coming down on me. I probably will do all of the plan review because it's easier on new construction for somebody that's here every day to walk it through the process than what it is to have somebody in here on Tuesday that doesn't work again until Friday. So I would probably do that. They could go out and do the actual inspections of the new construction, but the plan review process I would complete probably myself.
So you did one Friday, right?
Thursday.
I did one today, yeah, and I went to a, I went to a George Pacific meeting for just a, a needed change from, on one of their paper machines.
Right.
Which took, you know, it takes, that kind of stuff takes an hour or two to really grasp a hold of the concept, because at that point I hadn't even looked at the plans.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Well, when do, when do you start to charge? I mean, do you start to charge when you get to the site, or?
That's, that's all part of the, I mean, what I think we'd have to do in the legwork of the agreement is figure out when, when all that starts.
Because won't, I think, I think at that point, like you say, for instance, like with drive time and all that kind of stuff, I think that's what Ms. Logan, Ms. Becker should be brought in, because that may be an audit, who's going to track all of this time?
I agree.
That may lead to another level that we necessarily haven't thought of, and we, I...
I've kept, I've kept a spreadsheet on everything I've done, so if I wrote a letter, I wrote...
But I definitely agree that we should extend the service if we have, just like they've done for us, but again, I think everyone who has a key role in it, and I think Ms. Becker at some point may need to be brought in, as well as council, just to ensure that we look at it from all the different facets and not just from one particular facet.
She's been, she's been aware from the beginning.
Right, and we will be putting together a more formal agreement. This is an emergency agreement which they submitted to us last week, thus the call to meet, so that we can at least take some type of temporary action to provide the services at some form of remuneration, because right now we're getting, no, we're still providing service.
Correct.
And that is the deal.
Mr. Holmes?
So this, this agreement was signed by the county administrator on December 4th, and I guess I'm not fully understanding what its purpose was, because it specifically states that there won't be any compensation made in paragraph two.
This was their proposal.
I, I hear you.
It was nothing on the table.
But my point is, if you say we need to put something in play for the time being, and I'm just saying, that's probably true, but you don't want to put something in play for the time being that's contrary to what you're saying it needs to have in it. So if you're not, if you're not going to do these services for the time being on a free basis, then paragraph two needs to be changed.
No, and that's, that's the purpose. If you look at the summary, the summary basically says that, the language in paragraph two is a thirty-day out on those things, the staff recommendation is that those things not be a part of the agreement. In essence, that we draft our own agreement.
Yeah, seven does have a thirty-day out, and that's always a good, that saves a whole multitude of standards, for sure.
But not on no compensation.
But, yeah, well...
And so again, and the other part with the agreement that they gave was, it said, this agreement basically would be in play until another agreement was reached. Well, if you got an agreement that says, "I'm not, no one getting paid," then, I mean, what's your incentive to get that agreement done?
No incentive, zero.
The thirty-day notice is the incentive, you know, at some point we can provide notice that that's going to stop at thirty days. And I understand there's a mutual cooperation spirit that's in play here, but I just think that we need to verify some of the language a little bit before anything is signed.
Right, right.
Well, tonight, we simply asked to amend this paragraph two under the now therefore that says that neither party shall be required to pay any compensation to the other. That's the one that we're proposing tonight. We need to amend more paragraphs. We can do so, but we wanted to go ahead and put something on the emergency in place and we can, you know, sit down and draft up and interlocal for going forward.
And we, and thinking aloud, can we? Can we direct staff or council, someone, to send our proposed fees over to the county on this matter and bring it back on Thursday?
Do the agreement then.
Or, or direct staff to, to negotiate the agreement, the emergency agreement for, for adoption on Thursday.
Absolutely. I don't think, got to be the appropriate thing we do.
On our agreement with this, with the county, do we have a cap on the amount that we pay them? On our, our, our building permit, do we have a cap?
Now, we don't, they take off fees, though.
We have simply sent all of, all of the fees are paid directly to the county. We get zero of the fees, unless he makes a fire inspection and then they pay us for that. But under the prior agreement, I copied the paragraph that applied because it was at the time only inspection services, and that was what is here in the summary under, it says number eleven payment. That's the paragraph that was actually in that interlocal.
That's a good draft.
Yeah.
I agree with what Mayor said, regardless, it's a second statement, so that negotiation goes on with whoever needs to be in, and I need to make sure that Ms. Becker is the part of it.
And she's involved in the part of it.
I'm talking about a part of it, not just...
Yeah, and she was involved in this, we just had to set...
I'm talking about when it comes down to fees, because from the jump side, we want to talk, we want to make sure that we provide a service, but on the back end, we don't want
want to make sure that we're creating a audit nightmare. So we want to make sure that all of that is taken into consideration upfront and not on the back end, if it's something that comes about us in our behalf.
Can I ask a question, Logan? What about from an audit perspective, where the, the city is providing a service to another governmental entity? Um, what, what, from the, from an audit perspective, what are the requirements that we have at the end of the year showing auditor?
So we're going to, if we receive money from the county, we're going to have to have documentation of exactly what fee says that we're doing inspection. We need documentation that it was signed off, that he attended those inspections. Um, each one has to add up, reconcile to the check that is sent over to us. If we do an agreement where it's a flat rate, where they just bill us, there's no audit other than, are you following the con- contract?
We bill them.
Right. We bill them. It's based on the contract, uh, contracted amount, set one-time payment. We don't have to track hours, but if you do it the other way that we had talked about, or that you had just spoken about with the hourly, someone has to track those hours. Um, we have to decide whether it's drive time is included, whether whoever is tracking those hours, hourly rate is included too, as Ms. Sophia is doing that. Um, so we have to make sure that we negotiate a good dollar amount to where we cover ourselves, because I can guarantee you in the, in the agreement that we had previously with the building permits and the monthly amount, they covered them, you know, for their 25 hours, and then if there was anything additional. So, I mean, there's a lot of things to consider, but one is more audit, or audit intensive, the other is, this is what your contract says, this is what you're getting paid.
What if we don't charge them anything?
Um-
I'm, I'm asking from an audit perspective.
From an audit perspective, um-
We provide a service to another governmental entity and we charge nothing for it?
I would have to, I don't think that I've ever heard of. I don't want to talk about that. I know you're being serious, but, no, I know you're being serious.
Because right now, that's what they propose.
Right. I, I mean, I, I will have to research that.
Initial direction of the option.
Yeah.
It's inflated now, though.
And then, which is- That we would agree to that. And if we can get together on this, we can have a new agreement by Thursday. I don't think, I don't know that that's going to be possible, but as early as the first meeting in January, or even to call, especially meeting at the end of the month, we can put a better agreement in place.
And it's important to understand that we're still in a works of transitioning the permits over. We still had to, I mean, we're having to find documentation for dollar amounts that we're supposed to be sending over to them for open permits, and what, what's the city portion, what's the county portion? So, I mean, we are in, we are in works with them about their amount, so.
We can use this to negotiate that now.
So why don't we send in the same thing, why don't we do the, extend the same favor to them that they gave to us, which was 25 hours maximum at the 34.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six. That number's about 138 bucks an hour. Uh, but it covers, um, services. And-
That's a starting point.
It's the same thing they did for us, that'd be the temporary, we had a temporary agreement at that rate. I think it's fair. I think that, uh, you know, fire marshal services are definitely equivalent, if not more, than going to official services.
Do you think it's reasonable that we would be performing 25 hours of inspection services by week?
It wasn't necessarily reasonable, but they, we'd be performing 25 hours of building services.
I think we do, we have-
So.
I think for something like this, and this is a question that I was, we lean on the professionals to address that particular matter, because if something does arise, and I know just, sometimes there, it happens, and we want to make sure that we are covered. It's better to have something in place and not need it than to not have it in place and we don't have it. So, again, I just think that we need to put whatever cushion in that we do have, just so our behinds are covered. And then if it succeeds, or if it doesn't, we have to address it then, but if we don't put enough time in there from the very beginning, we are shortchanging our, our staff and the professionalism, uh, the professional service that they are going to render.
So how about eight hours?
How about we propose to them, how about we propose to them what they propose to us at 34.66, a max of 25 hours.
Right.
And $4 an hour for anything over it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I think that's fair. I mean, what you think, Chief?
It's reasonable.
I mean, that, I mean, that's-
I'm entertaining a motion.
I'm, I'm make, I'll make a motion to entertain, or to, to have staff draw up an agreement with the, with the county to provide fire marshal services for the, uh, 34.66, um, promote.
Can we also, within your motion, have that come back to the commission by Thursday?
And to have, uh, the, the, uh, work finished and returned to the commission by Thursday.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second, my Commissioner Campbell, for discussion?
Question?
Questions called, I favor the, I oppose, motion carries.
Can I ask a question just a quick? Even when you go to the inspection?
Yes, sir.
Once you leave the inspection, there's still work that has to be put into whatever it is that you saw, correct?
That's correct.
So if you spent four hours today, what would be the equivalent of the four hours that you spent at the site versus you going back and putting in the administrative component, just if you were to look at it from that perspective?
Yeah, if we go out and do the normal inspection, it takes about an hour worth of paperwork to log everything in when we get done. A, a normal inspection would only take, because I mean, if you're doing new construction is, I mean, it just depends on what, what portion today we're doing inspections, because I mean, some of the tests are two hours each. So, I mean, you'd spend the full two hours on site. Um, it just depends on the particular portion of the building that we're doing inspection on. Uh, so there's a great big, very-
We could easily end up at five or the eight, correct?
Oh, yeah, easy, easy.
And, and just to note that their inspection fees that they charge are not calculated based on hours that they're there.
That is correct.
It's based on square footage of your building.
That is correct.
It's a percentage of that. So if your building is 8,000 square foot, the fee that they're getting back is a lot more than his hourly rate of being there for, I mean, so this is, this is a good-
We want it to be equivalent.
They gave 1.5%, I think it is.
That is correct.
1.5% of the total project cost for their fee.
Yes.
So you're, for example, you have a $500 million project at GP.
Right, right. Wow.
So, I guess I'm still, uh, I guess I'm still a little bit, um, wrapping my mind around $138 an hour charge that we're paying them for permanent expenses. We're paying, we're paying. Um, yeah, I mean, um, so what do you, do you have any way of estimating the number of hours a month your staff's going to have involved this, or a week, or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, we just started last week, so I mean, I really didn't, wasn't familiar up till probably, it's going to be the rest of this week to figure out what projects they even have out there. Um, so, I mean, I don't, right now, I don't have the basis. I could tell you what it takes inside the city, but I don't, they got different projects popping up out there that I didn't even know anything about. So, I mean, today, I got another project that I didn't know a thing about.
And you're going to have to drive all over the county to make these inspections?
Correct.
That's correct.
And that is count, that would be counted in as well as prep. What about, what does it take for like prep time?
Well, that would be the, I'm sorry.
The prep time to, okay, you're going on an inspection.
Mm-hmm.
Pre, before you get there, you got to have some prep time before you get there. So, you, all of these things, I think, elements you need to probably identify and all, all the different factors or elements that you need in order to be able to say, okay, well, hey, if I went out and did an inspection, I have to do X, Y, and Z, and wow, I didn't know before, we didn't think about all these things. But now, you know, if you itemize it, I think it'll give a, a more clear picture.
I think that's where that, the, the formula the mayor was just speaking of comes into play, because they, they have, they've already calculated out what most of that stuff entails. Is that 1.5% of the project?
Right, so we would, what would that-
1.5% of the what?
The, the entire-
Of the cost?
Yes, sir, the entire project cost.
That's what their fee is?
Yes, sir.
For inspections, that's it?
That's, that's includes plan review.
Okay.
And all the inspections.
All right, so plan review, we're not doing?
Yes, that we are, we are doing plan review. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And you said that you'll be a part of all the plan review?
That is correct.
Yeah. He will do all of it.
He'll do all the favor, right?
It, it's all, and it depends on how the permit is submitted. If it's submitted all as one package, you could do the, the, the complete construction analysis and the, the formula. But if a subcontractor comes in there and applies for a separate permit, you add that permit fee on as well. So if the fire alarm contractor didn't submit to start with, his additional permit would be $100.
So. And that was just for the first 30 days, right?
Yes, first 30 days, that's, that was my motion, for first 30 days.
To be brought back on Thursday?
To be, to be brought back this Thursday.
All right.
And that should be in my motion.
We maybe take it out to the next, to the first commission meeting in January?
No, Thursday.
No, no, the sooner the-
No, I'm talking about if you bring this agreement out, instead of making it for 30 days, at least make it to the first, make it effective to the first commission agreement. First commission meeting in January, so that we won't have to come back if it, I'm not sure what that date is.
I'm not pressing to come back, so we just know what's going on with it.
It will come back. I just wanted to make sure that 30 days is going to cover that span of time.
So let me ask you a question, and then I'll stop. So if, if their rate's based on a percentage, 1.015, what's wrong with having our rate be a percentage of their rate? In other words, I'm not necessarily saying you get the point, the whole 1.015, but you get 0.1. And I say 0.15, I mean, one and a half percent. So what would be wrong with making our rate a percentage of what they get on each job?
There, there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, we can come up, there's multiple ways we can do this. We can do a percentage of inspection plus-
You don't have to worry about the overcharge and the-
Hourly rate, or we can, you know, I mean, there's, there's, we can do one or the other, or a combination of both, or-
Do that, and just take all of it?
I'm fine with that, too.
We want to reach out professionally.
Yeah.
I've been benevolent kind, though. I was going to say like we-
Well, I mean, that's, 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 I'm with you.
I mean, that's the sort of thing that we're still working out with the permit, on the permit side, too. You know, that we owe them a certain amount of money for open permits, but I'm saying there's no way, you know? And so, we're kind of in the middle of doing that right now.
I say, let's let Logan do it, she do, let's let Chief Doody do, let's, Attorney do what they do.
And they, they got the right staff to do it.
And everybody, let's work here.
So, motion been made, been popped in the second, and then passed.
Has the question?
Has the question been gone?
Not yet.
The motion got rejected.
We did pass it.
We're passing, okay.
I think I started, I had a question that lives inside me.
So we, it's passed.
Oh, yeah, we're done.
Thanks, Chief.
Mayor, can I-